How are you, sir? I can hear you now.
Okay, much better. Warm, how about you?
Yeah. Crazy, crazy rain, followed by really hot days, followed by nice brisk mornings.
A bit of everything right now.
I'm sorry?
A little bit of everything right about now.
Yes, sir. Oh, yes, it is.
But it's not winter, so.
No, no, that's a good thing.
We have Peter tonight, correct?
Yes, we do. We're gonna, we're gonna do a brief warm up from six thirty to say, uh, six forty, and then, uh, Chief's gonna come in at six forty-five and he's gonna be with us for about a half hour.
Perfect. So, um, I assume you'll go over the, um, the questions that were sent out?
Yes.
The responses. I was unable to type them in, so I handwrote my, uh, responses to those and I can just contribute that way.
Yeah, that's perfectly fine. Perfectly fine. We'll probably just, I, I, I suspect just, um, there's gonna be a lot of really good feedback. I, I suspect that there's gonna be several cases of, of overlap. And, um, I'm, I'm sure, you know, that, uh, we'll, we'll get a chance to have, have conversation. But I think the really interesting thing is gonna be to hear what the chief has to say and then let that be the catalyst for the synergy in the whole process.
Sure.
Dan, you're on mute.
There you go. How are you, Mr. Jeffries?
I'm fine. So how are you?
Excellent, excellent.
I see Joe DeSalvo. Joe, are you on phone or are you on Zoom?
I am on Zoom and I am driving, so that's why my video is off.
Oh, good. Well, you'll be happy to know that I am wearing a Dover Market t-shirt and I'm wearing it in solidarity until the Dover Market reopens again.
And when is the reopening?
I don't, I don't know. They have to come to me and Robin and Bob to get our signatures on a common victor's license that they do not have. So.
Looks like there's some work going on. The doors are open today when I drove by.
The doors have been open every day.
Oh, are they really?
Yeah, yeah.
Interesting.
Is it the same owners reopening?
I have been told, Joe, that it's gonna be the owners of the wine shop.
Oh, okay.
But as they say in your business, that is just hearsay because they have not come and asked me for a signature for the license.
Well, I met the owner at the wine store a couple of weeks ago and he confirmed it.
He did?
He did. I think his name is Nabu. He's, I don't wanna, um, he's not usually there, but he just happened to be there on a Saturday. So that, cause they were doing work next door.
Wow, that's good.
Yeah.
And if you heard anything else, rumors in terms of what it's gonna be like?
Um, I think it's gonna be exactly like the Dover Market. Um, they're just redoing the floors and the lighting right now. That that's, that's all I know. I know between the Dover Market and the Dover Deli, it's, there's not a lot of options right now.
Yeah, we could do better, I think.
And the eyeglass store and the, um, repair shop.
Don't forget Doug.
Right.
Doug is close too, isn't he?
Wait, is Linda leaving?
Yeah, her business is for sale.
Really?
I didn't know that.
Well, I may, I may starve to death. I may be blind and I have nobody.
But you can still drink.
Well, what about, what about the dry cleaner? Is that still around?
Oh, yeah.
At least, at least, uh, John, you'll have clean clothes. Wasn't there a story about that dry cleaner a while back where nobody could get their clothes because they sold the business or something?
Yeah.
Someone had a wedding dress in there.
Yeah, I went from Anton's to, to Lepel's, I think. Yeah.
Sorry for my tardiness. Are we still waiting for McGowan? Oh.
Yeah, I think we, we're gonna, we have everybody. Has, has everyone had the opportunity to meet Michael? Mike, that, that handsome in my car, in my screen, the handsome gentleman in the bar, in the lower right is, is Mike. Michael, will you, uh, say hello to everyone and introduce yourself? Michael's our, our brand spanking new town administrator for the town of Dover. He is the, he is the new person in charge.
Hi, everybody. Nice to meet you. Um, as John said, just, just started, uh, just started my second week. Um, is the joke in the building is I came back, so that's a good sign. And, uh, really excited to, uh, working in Dover and, um, I'm trying to get up to speed quickly on the process you've already been through, so I'm happy to be here tonight. I'm kinda doing the behind the scenes, uh, work on the Zoom stuff, so I'll, uh, I'll keep an eye on that. But, um, really looking forward to working with you all and thank you for your time and commitment to this very important process.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome.
That's terrific. That's terrific. Russ, I'm gonna turn it over to you in, in thirty seconds. I just have to do, uh, two quick things that are, uh, just a matter of procedure. I have to say to everyone, welcome to the search, the police chief's search committee. Meeting is being held remotely via Zoom, uh, via order of originally Governor Baker in March of two thousand and twenty. Uh, the Zoom meeting is being conducted remotely and please take care not to share your screen. It is being recorded via Facebook on the town server. I am John Jeffries, chairman of the committee and the board of selectmen. And we have with us, uh, Russ Stevens, who is the gentleman from our consulting group who's helping us with the search and search of the police chief. So with that, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at six thirty-three. And Russ, turn it over to you, sir.
Thank, thank you, John, and, uh, welcome, Michael, and I'll, I'll get you up to speed real quick. I was gonna reach out to you, your first week as an ad, that's a little too soon. Uh, but I'll, I'll give you a call so we can, you know, you can ask me any questions that I don't cover this evening. So, did, did everyone get a chance to look at the job announcement that's posted right now? It should have been sent, it was sent to everyone. So, the job announcement that gives a brief description, talks a little bit about the community itself, talks about what we're looking for in our next police chief. It goes into the recommended, the recommended qualifications and it talks about the minimum qualifications. Right now, the closing date on the job announcement is Friday, August fourth at ten AM. Friday, August fourth at ten AM. So we have a little better than a week, um, that we have for applicants. We have fourteen applicants right now and I think I've told everyone, uh, cops are a little, uh, for lack of better terms, uh, lazy by nature. They tend to take their time before they put their resumes in. So usually the last week we get a little bit of push. I'm hoping to get right around twenty resumes. When we get the, and as a reminder, when we get the resumes in, uh, what I do with another chief is we look at the resumes to make sure they meet minimum qualifications. Those that meet minimum qualifications will go on to the next phase of the assessment, um, which is gonna be the written phase, the written essay questions, responses to written essay questions. From that group, we're gonna call it down again and then we're gonna do the oral phase, the oral interviews via Zoom. We call the list down again to the final one, which is the assessment center, which actually takes place in Dover. We have not secured a time or a location just yet for that. We're still a little bit, we're still ahead of the game. Um, I also sent out the questionnaire, the police chief selection review committee questionnaires. If you guys, I got a couple of them in, um, if you guys could take a few minutes and fill it out and send it back to me. I haven't got all of them in. Um, I'd just like to see what you're saying. That helps me when it comes time to look for a chief. You guys know your town better than I do, so when I read these, I actually get a little more familiar with your town. Um, I work in a very similar town as a police chief now. Hamilton and Dover are similar a lot of different ways, but I like to see what you have, what your thought process is. It also talks about what you're looking for in your next police chief as well, which is important for me to see. A lot of the information that you put inside these or you, you write down in your, on your questionnaire, you fill out your questionnaire. I can also use as assessment set of questions or I can use as oral board. I can take them and use them as an oral board question and/or written essay questions. So those are important to me. If you could get those into me, please. Um, right now, where we're at right now, I, and this was, uh, Chief McGowan was supposed to be present with, on this meeting.
He is, he will be, Russ. He, uh, what I asked, uh, him for, could he give us fifteen minutes? So we could get acquainted, introduce Mike, introduce you, just bring, for you to bring us up to speed, essentially just what you're doing. He'll be joining, uh, at, uh, six forty-five, so it's, between six forty and six forty-five, so between three and eight minutes from now.
Right, great, that's great. Um, so we're bringing Chief McGowan on to talk to him a little bit about the departments, to get a little more insight about the department, talk about the town. Um, I've already looked at your crime stats in town, I looked at demographics in town, your population in town, your businesses in town. So I do that to, so I can be a little more familiar with what the town looks like and what you want for your next police chief. Reason why being a chief, we're bringing Chief McGowan in onboard is so we can ask him questions about what's going on. You know, what are some of the trends that you are seeing in Dover that he's seeing in Dover as the police chief? You see it from your vision or from your seats and from your eyes. I wanna see, we're gonna ask him what he sees and what's, what he's having from his department. I wanna talk about, you know, recruitment, where we're at with staffing levels. Um, we can talk about what the structure of the department is, the command structure right now in the department. So we get to kind of familiarize ourselves with the department itself and that's where Chief McGowan comes into play. Um, John, Chief McGowan is there till how long? I have it in my notes somewhere. He's interim now.
He is interim right now, Russ. He would like to, he would like to depart completely, fully, whatever that means, in the month of September. He is not, uh, that is not an absolute drop dead. He's not moving out of town. He's not going somewhere where he's physically leaving. Um, so September is the hope for. What I wanted to share from the board of selectmen to everybody this evening is, I, while I want to be mindful of the chief and we'd like to, we would like to accommodate him to the extent that we can, I'm not worried at all about having for, for this group and for our process to go beyond September as a timeframe. And the reason for that is we have three very seasoned sergeants who are the chief when the chief is not here. So there's always a sergeant on every shift and the sergeant in charge is the sergeant on duty, uh, when the chief is not here. That will, that can rotate, Todd Wilcox, Joe and Ryan Mency. So we, we, the board of selectmen feel very, very confident in the capabilities and the ability of our sergeants. And we, while it's not a perfect world, because that can be subject to a, um, a union negotiation point. It, it's, if you didn't have it, it's not subject to a union, uh, it, it can't be bargained in the union contract. If we don't have a chief, then it can be part of the bargaining. So we'll address that. I'm not worried about it. We have a very good relationship. Uh, the chief can speak to that probably in a little bit more depth if you'd like to ask them that. But I just wanted you all to know that. Does that make sense to you, Russ?
It does, it does. As long as you have someone interim and if, if Peter's willing to, if Chief McGowan's willing to stick around a little longer, that helps out. Um, and if he has the support of his command staff, his sergeants to fill in in his absence, that works out well too. You know, we just have to be, when we, the final candidate, like we discussed at our last meeting, the final candidate, there's still, after you select the final candidate, there still has to be a conditional letter of offering, your psychological as well as your medical, and then a background investigation before the final candidate's actually onboard and ready to go. And the candidate has to make notification to his current employer, his or her current employer, um, that they're gonna be leaving. And they may have vacation time, they have to burn as well, so we just have to keep that in mind.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah, um, this is Joe. I, I wanna just add, uh, and underscore something that John just addressed. Um, I don't know how many of us have served on search committees before. But I've served on two university president's search committees and both of them were failed searches. Um, but really the end result was ones where the very best candidate that fit the role perfectly was found in a second search. Um, so that phrase doesn't sound like a very good phrase because it has the word failed in it, but I would agree and echo what John says, Dover is a unique town. And we need to find the perfect candidate and if it takes us extra time to do that, I would support, um, you know, having some flexibility around the deadlines, um, so that we get, um, the very best candidate, uh, the very best candidates to assess and then, um, to select them.
Yeah, agreed. There is no, there's no set deadline either. I mean, it, we go with, we can go as fast or as slow as possible, um, as we want, rather. We don't, there's not a set deadline. We just have to be mindful of, uh, Chief McGowan. But if we have support from the PD to cover for him, that's good. Um, so we, we can go at our own pace. Uh, I don't like to see the seat being empty too long, uh, cause that's not good for the town not to have that department head there. But if, you know, as long as the board's comfortable, um, if, if Peter McGowan does leave at the end of September, we're good. And like John said, that's not a lock just yet anyway, but either way, we're gonna make it work.
Yeah. And Russ, have you looked at the candidates that have submitted, uh, applications today?
I, I have. You have some chiefs in there, you have some captains and lieutenants from various size PDs, Dan. Um, some are large PDs and some are size PDs that are current, yeah, about the same size as Dover. So it's kind of a mixed bag right now. Some are from out west, some are central, uh, some are from Salt Shore down towards the Cape. So I have looked at them. Um, some of them I've seen the names before in other processes we've done. Uh, like I, like we've done, I, I told you last time, ten or eleven, we're at eleventh one so far this year. And thirteen we did last year for chiefs. It's just a ton of turnover for chiefs in the last couple of years. Or police in general, the, the profession in general, there's been a lot.
What's the turnover like in Dover for the, for the regular officers?
And I don't have an answer to that, John, usually?
Yeah, so Dan, it's, um, historically it was really, really low. Over the past five, six years, it's been very high. And what, what's happened, there's a lot of reasons for it. Um, I think it's, it, it might be a good question to ask the chief to get an idea of how he feels. The culture here may be different or, or maybe similar to other small towns. What other boards of selectmen have told us, Dan, is that uh, hiring in general for police has fallen through the floor since the, uh, John, George Floyd incident and the defund the police process, uh, in, in, across the country happened. There was a, a big sort of, uh, unintended consequences of people just not going into the police academy. Uh, that's one factor. A second factor was in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, they took the ability of the chief to pay for a person to go to the academy. So you had to have a person who was through the academy before they were eligible for a, um, a job in the town.
I see.
Um, Paul, you, do you know the name off the top of your head or Mike, do you know the name of that bill? Is it the Quinn, was that the Quinn bill or the?
No, the, the Quinn bill had to do with, uh, that's your educational package. Um, what you're referring to is the, the post commission, the, the new legislation bill. And, um, that came across. Part of what we're seeing is since George Floyd, since COVID, um, the amount of applicants we're seeing is, is changed. But also with the post commission, we no longer have reserve academies, the part-time academies, where you could hire part-time people that went to a part-time academy and that was your bench that you'd hire your full-time people from. We no longer have that anymore. Um, and in a lot of ways, it's through attrition, that's gonna be a good thing for the profession. Because I think I told you guys last time, the academy for your part-time was, was three hundred and fifty-nine hours. For your full-time is it was seven hundred and seventy-four, but you have both part-time and a full-time are doing the same job, one with less training. So through the long, you know, in the long run, it's gonna be better for the profession. It just makes it a little harder for hiring. Also, what we're dealing with now too in the profession is, um, a little bit change in generations. You know, when, when my generation started, you usually went to one job and you stayed with it your whole career. Maybe you bounced once. You went from one job, one police job to another department. Um, now we see a lot more, this generation tends to bounce a little more from job to job. So we're seeing that with the younger generation as well.
Oh, yeah, good. I made note of that too, to, um, see if we could address that with Peter. Um, it seems like there's, there has been a lot of, um, the personnel at the department leaving the last few years. And I'm just wondering if he could maybe identify some problems that we could help with, with the new chief. Um, yeah, hiring is absolutely across the industry, a huge problem. Nobody wants to do that job anymore. But it seems like the guys that have been leaving Dover are not, they, they've been there long enough that it's odd that they're not staying beyond the first five, six, seven, eight years, whatever it is. They're kinda entrenched at that point, so why are they leaving?
And on that note, Paul, aren't some of the people that left longtime Dover residents?
Yes.
So is there a culture within the police department that there's existing some negative or, or positive? I, I don't know. Naively speaking, again, just as a resident, why wouldn't somebody wanna come to Dover? It seems to be kinda a cushy chief job. So I would think it would be filled with people, like, I don't know, like Vermont, it's like, what's going on in Vermont? Nothing, you know, cow slipping. It's not like where, I don't know, is that naive? Would someone not be attracted to that kinda community-based job?
Would you like me to move him in? The chief is here now. He just got here. Do you want me to move him in? Are you ready?
Oh, yes, please. So, Chris, while, while we're waiting for the chief, just a, a couple of things regarding the, 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 there are three candidate, four. There were four officers that had lots of tenure who left recently. Two, Doug Common and, and Chris Vanderhoff went to Northeastern. And the, the reason very simply was Northeastern was looking for officers like everybody else was. Both Chris and Doug have three kids, all of the ages going into college. Northeastern offers free tuition to employees' kids.
Yep.
For both of them.
It's a big raise in pay.
It is a huge raise in pay. It was.
Yep, and a great school.
A great school, so.
Uh, John, that's a little, um, there, there's, there's a little more to it than just free tuition. If you're an employee of the school or an employee of the campus police, there's a lot more, it used to be that way, but there's a lot more criteria now. There's actually a lottery at a lot of these schools. And even if you do get selected, it's not free tuition. You get maybe free labs or you get free housing or something, but it, it's just a percentage of the, the tuition. There is a benefit, but it's not quote unquote free tuition, so there's that to consider too.
Yeah.
You may, you may not even qualify. Actually, there's many, those campus police who don't make the cut.
I'm, I'm sure, you know, Paulie, that, that's a hundred percent correct. And, and I've, I have spoken to both officers several, on several occasions since they've left. They're both very happy. They're both, you know, really pleased with the, with the move. But you, the, the chief is here, so without any further ado, we'd like to introduce Chief McGowan. Well, he just, he went dark.
He's so close too.
Yeah, we could, so we had, we almost had him.
His box is there, but maybe his audio's not working?
Maybe. Maybe. Um, Russ, we, well, what's?
I don't think he's there.
There he is.
I've got horrible service.
Lost him.
John, um, I'll, um, I'll, I think the last comment was a very good one, so I can offer a perspective. And I think Paul can probably offer one as well, uh, at least for those of us that were in law enforcement roles. You know, your point was a good one and that would seem like the obvious, but I think for public servants and for teachers and the like, when you come to a community that is as, um, 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 special as Dover, you've got highly educated people, you've got a wealthy, uh, population. Um, and I can remember as an FBI agent, uh, going into an investment bank or into, um, a CEO's office and often hearing things like, gee, don't you know who I am? And while I certainly haven't experienced that, um, I, I don't know for a fact. I, I certainly have put three kids through DS and I can know, uh, often that, you know, the expectations of Dover parents, of Dover citizens are very high. And sometimes their status in, um, the world in which we live is, can be very off-putting to teachers and police officers who feel like they are being, uh, sort of spoken down to. Um, again, I don't know that that sentiment exists in Dover, cause I've not experienced it, cause I'm a member of the community and I haven't served, but that does exist in the world we live in. It's existed for many, many years where people can think that they deserve special treatment because of any number of different reasons. And, you know, Chief McGowan can tell us whether or not that's a sentiment that, um, prevails when they tried to police in Dover. Uh, maybe Paul can add to that if he's able to.
Oh, it's definitely a concern that I have for the department and for the new chief. I've experienced it, um, just working in, in my position in the state. I, I didn't try to stop cars or, you know, do my job within the town or any of these towns that have their own police department and can handle it fine on their own. Mainly I would stay on the highways and state roads and, and that kinda thing. But the few times I did interact with some of the people in this town, I, I, that's the response I got. and that kind of thing. But the few times I did interact with some of the people in this town, I I that's the response I got. And I even saw it um at the station over the years, uh somebody walking in kind of, you know, not my kid. Do you know who I am? And and it was uncomfortable. It's uncomfortable. You're trying to do your job and it's for the betterment of everyone, protection, safety, the community. And then you get thrown that at you. It's it's frustrating. You really have to be, you gotta handle it with kid gloves and uh, you know, try to talk to people and explain why you're doing what you're doing.
Yeah, that that's really a a very powerful point, and I hope it's coming across because I think it's incumbent upon all of us to make sure that our chief can handle things like that. I know Pete did a great job doing that. Joe Griffin did a great job. But, you know, it's difficult to police in, you know, it's it's as difficult to police in uh Dover as it is in the South Bronx for different reasons, but I use that analogy because it's very real. I experienced it personally when I tried to interview a CEO.
I apologize for my naivete. I um don't come and I don't and I don't want to raise voice to be like that, and I would hope I could learn a little bit more of the sensitivities that the job requires um through your help, but I think um I'll just stop there. That's kind of unfortunate.
It is, but it's real.
Yep.
Chief is able to manage that. It's it's that's an important attribute that we'll need because it's that leadership that's going to retain young officers who don't want to get, you know, beat up by somebody because, of course, my kid, he doesn't do this or she doesn't do that. Like, that's that's not a good thing for a police officer to be hearing when he or she is just trying to do their job. It's the job is hard enough. And then if you get people who are, you know, presenting those things, it's very, very difficult to be successful.
Yeah, absolutely. How does a a town like Dover uh or a town like you you live in in Hamilton, how do you become acquainted with the the population? I mean, we we have uh not too many opportunities really to interact except within the school sometimes, right? So we end up being friends with the the parents of the kids uh that our kids go to school with and or your neighbors. Uh but, you know, we are a little bit remote. Uh it is a little bit rural. We don't have we don't even have a Dover market anymore to go to and 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 run into people. So I'm just curious how, from your experience, how you get to know the community as a chief.
So for me, it was in the chief I replaced, like I think I may have told you, was uh was indicted. So for me, it was imperative I get out into the community. So what we started doing is uh public safety days where we took the fire department, police department dispatch and we put all the, emptied the toy blocks basically and did it on a weekend, invited everyone. We got the bounce house. We got um, we catered it, we had hamburgers, hot dogs, so we opened it up to the community. We also did um uh citizens academies, police academies. Um visited your council engaging because we all know our seniors is living in town long, so visit your COAs. Um the schools are very important. Uh the schools, if you can sit down, nothing more impressive than seeing a police officer sit down and having lunch with students because those same students, especially the elementary age students, will go back and tell their parents that they had lunch with the police officer. So that's another good one. Any public events, um a lot of towns are doing the coffee with the cops, a lot of towns are doing night out. Um national night out uh with the police. So really, you're only limited by your own imagination. So, you know, this new police chief is going to be replacing uh two longstanding chiefs who have been there a long time between Chief McGowan and Chief Griffin. So he or she is going to have to come up with the different strategies to meet the people. Open houses are good, coffee with the chief is good. Um, you know, different different ideas they're going to have to come up with. I I like the community policing aspect. Um walking downtown depends on if you have a downtown area. I have a block downtown, so that's easy for me. Um, you know, so it's it's those kind of ideas that the chief is going to have to embrace and open up and start thinking about going to your uh your selectman meetings. Those are another one. Make sure they go to your town meetings to see people at town meetings. If you have special town meetings, start hitting the board meetings. You have different hit the finance committee meeting. Stop just so you could be seen. The more you're seen, the more people put a name to a face. Nothing worse than you hear about the, you know, you ask people in town, they uh, what do you know about the chief? Um I don't know who the chief is. Now, you're always going to get a certain portion of the townspeople that are not involved in the police department or town politics, town government, period. And that's a given. Um but by and by, people should know who the police chief is. So Peter, chief, thanks for coming. I appreciate it. It's always good to see you. Um so some of the things we'd just like to ask, so from your seat, what are the challenges from your seat for being the police chief? What are some of the challenges that you see that the new chief is going to have to pick up? Or some of the challenges, not necessarily being a chief in the Commonwealth, I've got that, but specifically in Dover?
Uh I think this is gonna be a problem.
Yeah, yeah. I'm getting nothing but
Maybe if he kills his uh his video.
Unfortunately, Peter, you're coming in all broken out.
Maybe you call it.
Yeah, I'll call it.
Well, we were so close again.
Yeah.
You know, his, what's happening in in Dover is no different than happens in a lot of small like towns. Um like I said, we, when I did the Carlisle Police Chief Search, Carlisle, Mass is a lot like Dover and and very unique town, uh small town feel. Um, you know, in in Carver, when we looked at, we actually looked at Dover when we were doing the Police Chief Search in Carver. Uh and some of the the nuances of your towns because they match. And, you know, policing is different than it was when I started going on forty years ago. The expectations of police officers are different and and the policing needs to evolve and it had to evolve. You know, it was time for it to change and a lot of the practices we had in the past were antiquated, so we do things different. And in a lot of ways, you know, the the new police legislation that passed was for the better for us. Um some of it, it makes it very hard to not to do policing, but to do for hiring and it's kind of you know, I think the pendulum is going to slowly swing back the other way when we start getting good candidates again who want to be police officers. We just don't see that right now. We're not getting those those candidates on a national level. No one's getting those candidates that want to be police officers. As it pertains to the police chief's job, some candidates, some people do not want to be a police chief because you know, to be honest with you, being a sergeant or a second-in-command or lieutenant or captain at a police department is not a bad job because at the end of the day, they drive out of the driveway and they watch the police department get smaller and smaller. You don't have to think about what happens at the PD. You don't have to think about the budget, going to the finance committee meetings, going to the school meetings, um going to the select board meetings, doing discipline, doing internal affairs investigations. They don't have to think about that. So sometimes being a second-in-command, uh and exo, if you will, executive officer, is is more attractive to some people than being the chief.
Right.
Peter, did you log on?
I am. Well, I'm gonna just call in because that seems to be working better. Can you hear me better on this?
Much better. Appreciate it. So uh Peter, we don't, we didn't even hear any portion of uh what you were saying at the, for the first question. Um what are some of the issues as a seated police chief that the new chief is going to have to deal with in Dover?
Okay, uh retention is is a a bit of a problem. It's everywhere and it's just starting to creep in to Dover. Um we've had two officers leave in the last month to go to other opportunities and um and when we used to advertise, when I first came here, I'd advertise for a position and get twenty-five or thirty applicants. And now we're getting one or two in there, you know, rejects from seven or eight other departments. So we're really struggling on on where to locate um the the high caliber of candidates that we've had the luxury of having before. And and I think um to expand on that a little bit, we gotta we gotta work on fit. Um you can teach police work, you can teach laws, you can't teach fit, both internally and externally uh with the other officers and with the town. I heard uh some of the conversation before um before I was fully logged on about um how um um uh special talents are needed for the chief to be able to deal with um uh deal with people who are um um difficult to deal with sometimes or have certain opinions and it's, you know, the, I think Russ said it, or or actually Joe did. The policing in in the Bronx isn't going to work here. Um you can say no, but you gotta take half an hour to say no and you have to have a good reason for it. So um retention would probably be uh number one. And then number two, uh we need to work towards uh certification and um uh getting all the policies and procedures all approved. That's going to be a mandatory um mandatory thing going down the road with the new post, and we have not started that uh project yet.
So state accreditation, state certification, state accreditation, um that's a big thing for your department. And that's something your new chief, your next chief, is going to have to take seriously and get going. That that means that all policies have to be updated, all policies have to be current and meets mass impact uh Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission standards. So that that is a, that is something that should be number one on your next police chief. So maybe find, one of the things we might look for is someone who has experience in the area of accreditation. Comes from an accredited department, knows how to get your current department from point A to point B um to a fully accredited department. And that takes time. That's writing policies, reviewing policies, getting policies approved, implementing policies. Make sure they do not have an impact. It's not a CBA or something you have to negotiate with your unions um and slowly rolling them out. So that that takes a little bit to happen. Um that's not something that happens overnight.
Some of it done, Russ? I I I just didn't feel it was right to have me being the implementing body with a new person coming in, so uh whoever starts will have a a thumb drive with a lot of that information pre-done. And it'll be just a matter of uh having them tweak it um to either to state certifications, specifications, or their own preferences and then doing any impact bargaining as necessary.
Yep, agreed, agreed.
And and the em- the impact does a lot uh in helping it. So if if the person, the candidate, isn't coming from an accredited department, that's not an automatic reject. I I'd like that to be out there, too.
Yeah, it's not a disqualifier if you have a candidate that doesn't have accreditation experience because Mass Police Accreditation Commission uh utilizes, we have people, I'm the president of the commission um of the Mass Accreditation Commission, one of the hats I wear, and we have people that will come out and assist your department. Doesn't cost anything to assist the department. They'll help you with your policy and procedures. They'll help you get best practices. So that's one thing that's out there as well. Chief, are you um, you said you have two officers leave, so are you two? Are you looking for two more people right now? You have two openings?
So actually, I'm I'm in the background phase with one officer. Um and we're looking at a start date around October first, depending on his family commitments and current job commitments. Uh I have another interview tomorrow morning, as a matter of fact, an officer who's from the Cape who wants to come off the Cape. Uh and then there's two or three in the pipeline that um that I don't think will make uh make it, make the, make the cut. So we'll be looking for one probably by the time the new chief starts.
Any um any other issues such as fleet issues, building issues, any other issues? Um that might be appropriate that we could, we should know about?
No, I think uh anybody coming from outside is going to have a hard time adjusting. Dover does uh fleet a little differently. We have four marked cars, more marked cruisers that are constantly going. Uh every other department uh that I know of has you know, at least eight for a department my size, but um they've they've always done it that way and it works as long as you can uh plan accordingly. So that'll be an adjustment for whoever's coming in. Uh the fleet's in good shape, the building's in good shape. Uh we're we're pretty much maxed out for size uh in space, but uh what we have is uh is definitely, definitely workable.
Technology, any technology updates needed or everything's good there?
Everything's good there.
How about uh budget is, naturally, the budget's already in and you're in your new budget now. Training issues for officers, any training requirements you could foresee coming in the future? Your existing office?
We, no, we have uh all our, all our police officers, dispatches, all our dispatches are police officers. So in addition to the forty hours um set by the MPTC, we also have to do another sixteen hours for um uh nine-one-one. So uh there there's no shortage of training um and that that's been working pretty well over the last three or four years. We do a combination in-person and then online training to make make the most of of uh available time and scheduling.
Okay, technology you said is good?
We're in good shape with technology. We've got brand-new laptops uh in the cruisers, uh got brand-new portable radios. We are struggling a bit right now with uh our radio system, but it's basically a logistical issue rather than hardware. Um we need to replace an antenna uh on a site and we got big put it by Eversource and kicked off our own tower, so uh we're struggling with that. Um with the politics involved in that, but that's, that may be the only thing that I'll leave hanging when I go out the door.
Okay. How about, do you foresee any challenges for the new chief? Besides what we discussed, any challenges coming up that you can foresee? Staffing is always going to be an issue because human nature, we got people that leave and it's kind of, we have a lot of turnover in the policing world, and I get that. Any other challenges you foresee?
I think maintaining uh the good working relationship we have between the uh the board of selectmen and the Dover Police Association, it's it's a very good, very healthy and respectful um relationship, and I think that um that that has to be managed, that that doesn't happen by accident on either side, and that has to be um that has to be a conscious effort for whoever comes in.
Okay, and I think I asked you, you do not oversee the ACO, right? Animal Control Officer?
Uh if I had one, I would oversee her.
Okay, but you do oversee, you do oversee the ACO, you just don't currently have one now.
Correct.
Okay, and that's a shared?
We're exploring uh regionalizing that, but uh we're having difficulty um hammering out the details um with one town, so I may move on to another town.
So and since you don't have an animal control officer right now, are the officers responding to ACO calls?
We always have, um and we we do have a mutual aid agreement. We're working with Medfield now and Jenny comes over um without any any difficulty at all. Jenny or one of her part-timers will come over, so um I don't think that anybody would know that we didn't have an animal control officer.
Okay. What are some of the traditional type of calls, the the day-in, day-out calls? I mean, I know you've got traffic issues, every town has traffic issues, every town has those cut-through roads that people know about and uses cut-throughs. Um what are the type of issues uh do you have in town?
The the ruralness of the roads is an issue. Um a lot of pedestrians with no sidewalk, a lot of bicyclists, a lot of uh uh non-conventional transportation uh that that sometimes has difficulty coexisting with the the motoring public. Um distracted driving is huge. We have a couple, we have one traffic light in town and the traffic backs up for a mile and a half because as soon as people stop, they pick their phone up and then they're too busy checking their status to realize the traffic in front of them is moving, and that just compounds the situation. So we we try and police that as best we can and um I I just think the the size of the roads is probably our biggest issue.
So we're talking like Center Street, near Denham Street, that area?
And Center Street's a a freeway compared to some of the other towns uh streets, but yeah, some of some of the side streets are off the center uh without sidewalks. We've had some um we've had some crashes, we've had some close calls, and that's definitely something that we have to um uh really be be present and and show a fly the flag so people know we're out there and and behave.
Okay.
We've never, chief, we've never had any, this is Joe DeSalvo, how are you?
Fine, thank you, Joe.
Great. We've never, at least to my knowledge, have we ever used a police officer sort of during the high-peak hours um to direct traffic to sort of keep things moving or we didn't have the manpower for that or it's just not part of the strategy? I'm talking particularly on that left turn coming from Walpole, um um from um down near um the chickering fields, turning left onto Center Street.
Yeah, so we haven't, uh even historically, we haven't put an officer there. Um you know, it's one of those things, it's best to to leave it alone because um uh an officer would probably just follow it up in the other direction.
Yep.
You try and compensate for the street traffic and all of a sudden Center Street's backed up to Channel Five and need them, so um that that's, while it's slow and inconvenient, it's working as it is now.
Yep, okay.
I want to open it up to the board. Do any of you have, for the committee, any of you have questions of uh Chief McGowan? While we have him on the line?
The only question I had was really about the facilities, the physical facilities that we have, and and is that competitive with some of the other towns? I know like Natick obviously has an elaborate uh, you know, police uh headquarters with workout rooms and everything else. And I was just wondering, you know, how much of that is a factor in attracting not only a chief but other officers as well to the job?
So we have one of the oldest stations around, um almost all of our our contiguous towns all have big Taj Mahals and and So we have one of the oldest stations around, um almost all of our our contiguous towns all have big Taj Mahals and and. Uh Needham being the most recent and most spectacular, but within the footprint that we have, we have everything that we need. Um the town just spent probably, was it six or seven years ago, Mr. Jeffries, on a, on a renovation of the dispatch area? It was probably seven or eight hundred thousand dollars and it really modernized it and and professionalized it. Uh we do have a workout room downstairs, we do have a a men's and ladies locker room, the men's room's being uh reconfigured and and redone. This fiscal year, um the the ladies locker room is in really good shape. Um so while we're not new and flashy and high technology, uh the facility works for what it is. Ideally, if 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 a new station were to come on board, uh it would be great, it would be a morale boost and what have you, but. Um I saw what it took to get the Carroll Building built, I don't think any of us will still be alive when a police station gets built.
Amen.
Maybe we can put one in the Carroll Building.
Oh gosh, I ain't touching that one.
Um I I have a question, hi Chief McGowan, I'm Nicole, um you know, certain towns you hear in Newton, they're having a problem with murders. Um you know, so certain towns have issues, you know, does Dover have issues with like, you know, mental health issues with teenagers? Or drinking and driving or like, what's kind of like our common issue? I I don't, I I'm more of a commuter, I don't, I don't know a lot of people in the community, um but I I always wondering like, what's Dover's, like, what's our issue?
We we are a a smaller version of whatever else you see out there, um we, have we had murders, yes, have we had rapes and kidnappings, yes, absolutely. Not to the extent of some of the bigger towns, but we do have the problems. Mental health is probably uh one of our biggest problems, both in the um adolescent and young adult and adult populations. Um I've tried for the last eighteen months to get a clinician in um to help with some of our calls and we we haven't been able to. We don't have the volume to justify a full-time clinician and I just can't find another town that is close enough. That is close enough to to uh do a a shared, shared position um. And that, Russ, that would probably be something else I'd put on the list to to work on, you know, a clinician's position through. The Department of Mental Health Grant Program that's out there.
Thank you.
And that's, that's normal from our size towns, you know, we don't get the call, we have. Any other type of crime that you can think of any larger city or town, we have, we just have it on a smaller scale. And the clinicians, and I face the same thing Chief McGowan's talking about, um. It's, we don't have the car buying to get a full-time clinician and trying to get another town that wants to go partner up. And sometimes three towns and get a mutual, getting an agreement and MOU with them is not easy to try to find that. Same thing with an ACO, trying to get regional agreements is not always easy for the police departments.
Right, it's 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 just like siblings, everybody's worried they're not gonna get their fair share and who's gonna get the good hours and and who's gonna, who's pay? The workout, but a clinician is is absolutely a necessity, uh my my officers, I don't know if, I missed the beginning of it, but. I'm very fortunate that the team we've assembled over there, um they they do everything, uh you'd be amazed if you saw some of the work that they've done with our mental health. Um calls, um spending hours and hours and then following up and making sure the the. The um person getting the help they need, whether it's through Riverside or through uh an emergency room clinician or some other resource. Um and the schools, same thing, uh Officer Katie does a spectacular job. Not not being a full-time SRO, but dedicating all the time that she has available to that. Um she's she's in a really good spot there as well, so um the the team here is probably the best. Um most attractive part uh of Dover, um in my opinion for the incoming chief. Because they they're not gonna have labor issues, they're not gonna have um. Guys that are retired on duty and just counting down the days and putting big black X's on the box and the calendar every day. There's, there's, there's eighteen or sixteen officers right now over there that enjoy coming to work and 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 really um. Enjoy the the variables of of what Dover offers every single day, there's something else going on.
Peter, what other type of regional programs are you in? You're part of the LEC, I know that, um you have your own dispatch. You're part of a regional school district, I got that, but as a police department, what other regional things are you in?
That that's it, the the MetroLEC is a consortium of forty-six cities and towns we belong to, uh the regional school system. Um we have mutual aid agreements both in Middlesex County and Norfolk County for whatever we need. Uh Detective Labrie's part of a, of a um Norfolk Gante Crime Unit, so there, it's like a a detective's. Uh regional team, um but we've, we've got uh access to almost anything we need, the state police has been great. Um we're we're very fortunate that that Dover's um considered a partner, not, you know, the the little pesky. Little brother that's trying to tag along, we've got a really good um working relationship with with the resources that we do need.
Peter, has there any, ever been any discussion in, on um like your command structure? It goes through, correct me if I'm wrong, and I I know um we spoke about John, it's chief to three sergeants. You, you don't have lieutenant, a captain or a deputy chief in between and am I correct in assuming that Dover's never had that?
We we have not, but we do have, we have four sergeants and one of the sergeants is the administrative sergeant, so. Um we we restructured a little bit, I had a a administrative assistant um that left. And uh working with the town administrator, we come up with the idea to have an uh administrative sergeant, he gets a a stipend. To take care of uh billing and details and and payables and assisting me with the budget and scheduling and all that stuff. So it's, it's, it's the next best thing to a lieutenant without the um having to have an extra union or having to have uh another gigantic salary. And it's, it's, it's a great um succession plan because after I'm gone, he'll help. The new uh, the new chief, and then when he's retiring in three or four years, the next sergeant up is already grooming and working with him to take over that position. So it's um, it it's not a lieutenant or captain or anything like that, but it's the next best, it it's, it's that without the title.
Okay, so that position, he does accounts, payables, receivables, he does payroll or she, he or she does payroll. Um he um does details and all the billings for details as well. Uh and fleet, does he take care of fleet?
No, one of the other sergeants takes care of the fleet for me.
Okay.
But but in a, as as you know, Russ, in a, in a town like Dover, everybody does everything. Uh I dropped off a car for tires this morning and one of the patrolmen picked it up this afternoon, it was done, so. Everybody does everything and that's um, that's something that's uh I'm very fortunate with.
Okay, perfect. Does uh, Peter, is there anything else you can think of? Um you know, something when we're looking for this next chief, you know, from your seats and from your eyes, what are we looking for?
Uh adaptability, flexibility, um you can't bring in someone who is absolutely black and white or rigid or my way of the highway. That just won't work internally or externally. Um I've got eighteen personalities and you've got to deal with each one uh individually and and my constituents in town. Um there there's all kinds of different styles and and different ways to uh deal with the same problem with different people. You know, you 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 you've got to have uh flexibility and a and a um, a willingness to to um. Modify your approach as needed.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything for uh Peter before he takes off?
That was easy.
Thank you for joining us, Chief, and for your service.
Sure, if if anybody has anything or they come up with something as soon as this disconnects, um my email's online, send an email, I'll happily. Uh respond to you or the group in general and and um if anything comes up even during the process, please. Reach out to me, my cell phone is the number that's dialing in, I don't know if that shows up on your screen, but write it down and call me if you have a question. Uh even if you're reviewing a resume or if you're, if you're talking to someone during the process and something comes up and you don't want to ask them or you want to ask me to verify, please feel free.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, thank you very much, it it's, it's really a uh, it's a pleasure to have you and and it really is very, very helpful to us. To get the insight to to um, to have you here, I mean, it's just a, it's a completely different opportunity. To have you here to fill the 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 job with you here versus if you are just sailing on your yacht. Um how is you, how is the service now on your yacht that I I saw you move from Rome to Rome?
Yeah, that that's not, that's not happening, not even a dinging, sorry. I did think of one more thing, I know I only have six minutes before you close up, um if you're, if you're looking at candidates. Um when I, when I interviewed with this position, uh I, uh Mr. Dolly was on the, on the Board of Selectmen and I looked him right in the eye and I said, I want to retire out of Dover. And he said that was the difference between me and the other candidate. And I think that the board, that the committee should be looking at longevity, you don't want someone who's looking for the title to to use this as a springboard. It it took me legitimately three or four years to to get the hang of it here, um and you and you don't want someone who's gonna be here. Couple of years, Russ will tell you this, you don't want someone, there there's guys out there that'll hop around until they find the next shiny thing and and that's not what you're looking for. You want to find someone who's gonna give you, you know, the next ten, twelve, fifteen years. Joe Griffin was sixteen years, I was thirteen, would have made more if uh things fell a little differently, but um. You you want a decade or more out of the next, next uh candidate, is that fair to say, Russ?
It is, the days, you know, that that, you don't want to to echo what Peter said, you you don't want someone to come for a contract of three years. And just use Dover as a, as a springboard to get another chief's job in a larger PD. Because then you get known as, you know, a a a chief mill, you're just turning them over and over. You want someone that's gonna give you a couple of contracts, you know, three contracts, four contracts, you want someone that's gonna be there for a while. Being a chief, if you're a new chief, um it takes four or five years just to understand how to build a budget. Who to go to, understand the other department heads, how the town works, you know, and. Peter was right on the money, you get eighteen different personalities that you're dealing with, it's not like working in a large department where you don't even know your officers. You know every single officer, you know what's going on with their kids, you know their spouses. It's a lot more involved being a chief in a small department, you really don't want someone who's gonna use it as a springboard.
I'm sorry, just one last question, we we spoke of it last time, um Chief, thank you for your service and thank you for your time. But have we ruled out all options that are existing beneath you currently within the department? Is there anyone that would like to take the job that you've worked with that you see could do the job?
Uh speaking candidly, yes, I mean, there's one officer, if if the town says, here it is, it's your job. I'm sure that candidate would take it, but I don't think that they want to go through the whole pro, the the process is is very. Um involved and and stressful and what have you and and uh I think they're worried that that if they didn't get it, it may look. Uh reflect poorly on them, so I think that um.
But do you think they would be qualified for that job?
Um qualified, yes, um able, probably not with the, with the, with the um. Joe Griffin used to say, you gotta do the dance, um and this particular officer has two left feet, is that fair to say?
Yeah, great, honest.
Yeah, great, awesome, I would, I would trust that person with my life, but um not a good fit.
Not even with dance lessons?
What's that?
Not even with dance lessons?
I've been trying to give him dance lessons the last three years and he's stepping on my feet, telling me no, thank you.
Okay.
All right, um, does anyone else have anything, we can let him go and Peter, it's always good to see you, well, for a brief second, I saw you and and talked to you, buddy.
All right, Russ, thanks for your time, I appreciate everybody's time and as I say, I mean it, if you, if you have a question, please reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Good luck, guys, hands full.
Thanks. Thank you.
So what Peter said and I, and I'll echo what he said and I said at the last meeting that we had, it's also about the fit, you have to have the right fit. There are people that are gonna be qualified for the job, but they're not the right fit, you you need both. You 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 want both in your town, you also want someone who's gonna work well with your, your new TA. Someone who's gonna work well with the selectmen, someone's gonna work well with finance, you need someone that's gonna gel with the other department heads. Um that's how the small departments work, that's how the small towns work, you have to be able to gel with everyone, you cannot work in a silo when you work in a small town. You know, so that's important too. So, right now, we're waiting for uh the closing date to happen and then I'm gonna work with Mona on setting up, Mona, excuse me, on setting up a. Another meeting for us after we get the resumes. The only thing we're gonna do, that I'm going to do is, any of them don't meet the minimum qualifications, um. We know we're not gonna be moving forward, I think, like I said, we have fourteen, we'll be up around eighteen to twenty by the time the closing date hits, that's what I'm hopeful for. And then we'll go over them and we'll see what we have for, for applicants.
Great, so the closing date is the fourth and. Uh Mike, do we have on schedule the following week? Should we, should we, I I believe we talked about it at our last meeting, we were gonna schedule something for the Wednesday of the following week and. Just want to be mindful of everyone's schedule, obviously it's August, uh will, with, is that, Russ, in your opinion, is that too soon? What's the logical timeline that we need for the, for our meeting after your deadline?
So after the deadline, if I could have a week and then we can meet, because I want to go through, what I do is I review the resumes. Then I start doing what I call a soft background, because they can't do a full background till they get a conditional letter. But I start making telephone calls, I start doing the Google searches, try to see what I can find out about the candidates, these individual candidates. Where are they now, how long have they been there, why are they looking to leave? So I try to get all that locked in, so I have a little more information about the candidates before we we move forward. So, you know, if I could have a week, so that puts us, I mean, I have my calendar in front of me, um. That will bring us to probably the first week of September. I mean, first week of August?
Yeah, first week of August.
So uh on our, on our calendar, it looks like perhaps in the past you had scheduled Wednesday, August ninth as a potential meeting?
Yeah, I left that, I I left that as a uh, a meeting holding place, Mike, we uh. Spoke about that last, in our last meeting, we spoke about that in our last Board of Selectmen meeting to have the ninth.
But we have a tentative, Jeff, um uh excuse me, John, we have a tentative at six thirty on the ninth, so why don't we just keep that? Because I think that works for the one. And then. And if Mona, if um Mona can send out the invitation, we'll just block that in.
Will do. Will do, I'll do that, great. Uh anyone else? Any comments, questions, anything that um? Anything that I can answer or that Michael can answer?
I I have a question, so we talk about fit, I mean, should we, you know, maybe, maybe residents can figure what that is, but but we need to like. Are we gonna try to define that through this questionnaire, what we, what we mean by fit? Because my idea of fit, you know, could be different from somebody else's idea of fit, so.
So when we're talking, yeah, it, well, you represent, every one of this committee represents their constituents in town. So through that, I gave everyone that questionnaire. Write, write down in that questionnaire, I've, I've only received a couple back, so if I can really encourage you guys to do that. In that questionnaire, you'll see where it talks about what do you see as positive characteristics or traits that you want to see. So in that questionnaire, you're gonna get that, Nicole, you're gonna be able to say that, I want to see what each one of you think of as a fit. You know, what me, you know, you hit, you said it, Nicole, what may maybe a fit for you, maybe different for Paul, maybe different for Dan, so forth and so on, so. I, in anything, if there's not something on that, there's not a question on that questionnaire that you, that fits what you're looking for, write something for me. You know, give me what you're looking for, I'd appreciate it, that really helps me.
Yeah.
And when I train up the assessors, um because when I bring the assessors in, I have to train them up on the town, what the committee's looking for, the screening committee, so that's important.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, my, just to share this with this group, you know. For me, you know, I think of like Boston police officers or like, you know, heavy-duty inner-city police officers, just having family members that are that. That doesn't feel like a fit to me, you know, somebody who's used to dealing like with really different kind of issues that we don't, we don't have here um and. Maybe too heavy-handed for some situations, talking about mental health and students and stuff, stuff like that, so. Um that's when I, you know, I think of somebody who comes from a big inner-city, huge police department, knowing some of our limitations that that. To me, probably wouldn't be a fit, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, and and keep in mind in Dover, so if you're working in a large town or a li, or a city. And someone says, hey, there's a dead animal in the middle of the road, they're not going to that call, Dover police, they'll drag the animal off the side of the road, wait for DPW to come to take the animal away. If, if your smoke detector's chirping at two in the morning and you call, Dover PD's gonna come and they're gonna take it off the wall, change the battery, they're gonna do that kind of stuff. Um you know, if, if the next door neighbor's blowing leaves on your property and you call, they're gonna come, they're not gonna, not, not like the big city. Now, we don't handle that, you deal with that type of thing, it's a different style of policing, it's really more community-style policing. And, and that's what the small towns still have and your larger cities and towns don't have.
I've called for chickens being in the road.
They were not my chickens.
Thank you.
They're Pals, they came from his backyard.
I remember, I remember when I first moved to Dover, this is Joe. I remember, I remember when I first moved to Dover, this is Joe, um in the police report, the only thing that week, it said somebody had thrown a bunch of Starbucks napkins on the roadway and the police were trying to locate them. That was, that, that was their only case that week.
Yeah. What, what happened to that report? And it, they used to be in the, the newspaper every week. Not there anymore.
I love that. It was like
That's the first thing I turned to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The newspaper closed before the, the report stopped, so we have no place to publish anymore. The, the Board of Selectmen stopped receiving the weekly report about, uh about uh right at the beginning of COVID, we just put an end to it, so. Uh so
I think we should bring it back. I think, bring it back.
Yeah, well, for some people it was their entertainment for the week.
Yeah.
But um so we have a, a meeting for the ninth. If anybody has uh questions, comments, concerns, please reach out to me, reach out to Mike. Um again, thank you all. I really, really do appreciate your time. The questions, your comments were, were fabulous. Once again, I think we, we do have, and I, I hope you all know this, that the Board of Selectmen and I put a great deal of time and effort into selecting you and asking your, for your help in this. And we did it for all the reasons that we've, we've, we've talked about. We really feel that we're going to get a great cross-representation of the town. We really feel that we want and we're encouraging you to, to to voice your questions, to ask things the way that you've done in the past few meetings. It's been really helpful. Tell us what you think is important to you. That's really what we want. Your thoughts, so.
All right.
Well, thank you all.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
See you on the ninth.
Paul, real quick, when, when did you retire, Paul?
Last year.
Last year. And where was your last duty station?
The Turnpike, the Weston Barracks.
Yeah, okay. When'd you break in?
Sturbridge.
How long ago? You were at C5, how long ago?
Nineteen ninety-six.
Okay.
Ninety-six to ninety-eight.
Okay. Was Tom Ford the chief then or was Button the chief then in Sturbridge?
Um Tom Ford, but I think he left before I transferred out.
Okay.
He was definitely there when I got there.
Okay. And when did you come on the job, ninety-six?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six, all right. I'm just curious. I worked in Sturbridge, so I was wondering what the, you know, where, where you would have been around that timeframe.
Oh, I, I thought maybe you were recruiting Paul.
I wonder if Jordan, because he lives in town.
Kirsten's instincts, never miss an opportunity, right?
Paul, what do you think?
Yeah, what do you think, Paul? Come on.
To all.
That application.
Vote sales.
All right, guys, it was a pleasure seeing you again. Um you guys have my email, you have cell phone numbers, anything pops up, any questions, give me a call. Um and, and Mike, you, you can take my cell phone there, please call me. Something pops up in your mind, something you think you missed from the, we only had one meeting prior to. Just give me a call at eight six zero three seven seven. I don't know if it's coming up there, eight six zero three seven 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 two three seven. Call me anytime, nights, weekends. Give me a shout.
Hopefully not weekends, but thank you.
All right, guys, appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Everyone, good night.
Thank you.